This meeting of the Norwood City Council is hereby called to order. Please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Our Father, who art in heaven, as a body we congregate in these council chambers, pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mrs. Stickley.
Here.
Mr. Blair.
Here.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Here.
Mr. Mumford.
Here.
All members are present. We have several requests to amend the agenda. First is a request to add a financing claims report regarding 2016 appropriations. That would be done under reports of standing committees. There is a letter that would be added as communication number three from the Ohio Department of, I'm sorry, yeah, from the Ohio Department of Liquor Control regarding the transfer of a license. There is an ordinance that would become, under introductory readings of ordinances, that is proposed to be ordinance number four, an ordinance to change appropriations for the year 2016 and declaring an emergency. And we do have visitors here from the YMCA that I would propose to take communication one and move up following minutes of the previous meeting so that the YMCA folks can do their presentation first in the agenda. Mr. Mumford.
I move to amend the agenda as you just stated so perfectly.
Would you like to repeat that? No? Seconded by Mr. Sancker, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. Before we get started, welcome, Mrs. Stickley. You have your new little baby. Can you, do you care to share it with us?
Sure. Ms. Drew Grace Stickley was born on Friday, April 15th, at 9:37 a.m., weighing seven pounds, 14 ounces, and is 20 inches long, and is doing absolutely perfect.
You look fabulous.
Thank you.
Just having a baby. Congratulations. We do have the minutes of the April 12th, 2016 meeting. Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, I move that we approve them now.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Excuse me. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. Next, we have the letter from the YMCA regarding the YMCA Gymnastics Center.
Dear Norwood City Council, the YMCA of Greater Cincinnati is embarking on an exciting project that will provide youth of all economic backgrounds in the Cincinnati area the opportunity to participate in gymnastics in an up-to-date facility. This project will enrich the community of Norwood and the Richard E. Linder YMCA and provide a facility that is comparable to YMCA gymnastics facilities throughout the United States. Over two years ago, I volunteered to assist Mrs. Kathy Lozano, group vice president, explore the concept of a YMCA gymnastics center. As a former Norwood YMCA gymnast who has been positively impacted by years of gymnastics practices in an atmosphere that encouraged leadership and service, I was more than happy to give back to an institution that helped me develop into the person I am today. I have been volunteering to support Mrs. Lozano as she created a business plan by sharing my gymnastics knowledge. This YMCA gymnastics center is about so much more than the noble goal of providing an affordable option for gymnastics in the Norwood area. It is about the sustainability of a YMCA that needs an innovative solution to increase revenue and membership. This gymnastics center will not only create a safer atmosphere and make dreams come true for area gymnasts, but it will enable the Richard E. Linder YMCA to continue its mission and have a larger footprint in the city of Norwood. This project has prompted the Richard E. Linder YMCA to form partnerships with Norwood area churches and schools so that it can continue all programming. In other words, although I initially volunteered to help create a YMCA gymnastics center that would benefit gymnasts and their families, I have learned along the way that this YMCA project will benefit the entire community of Norwood because it ensures the viability of its YMCA. The YMCA Gymnastics Center information materials include a brief description of the need, impact, and budget for this project. The YMCA mission is to put Christian principles into practice through programs that help develop a healthy spirit, mind, and body. We hope you will endorse this project to create a space in which youth of all ages challenge themselves physically, set personal goals, and bond with others who share a common passion while being impacted by the mission of the YMCA. By creating a YMCA gymnastics center in Norwood, the Richard E. Linder YMCA will be able to operate a balanced budget and increase membership by becoming a magnet for families interested in gymnastics instruction and related programs. More importantly, building the YMCA gymnastics center will positively contribute to the revival of Norwood and meet the mission goals of the YMCA. Sincerely, Emily Daly, gymnastics coordinator, Kathy Lozano, YMCA group vice president.
Mr. Mumford.
I move the letter to be received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? There are members present. Would you like to, I'm sure they would like to do a presentation if you would include that in your motion?
Yes, let's do that. Good idea.
So the motion on the floor is to receive and file the letter and to allow the members who are here from the YMCA to do a brief presentation. Is there any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. Mrs. Daly? If you would come up to the mic and just state your name and who you are with so that we can, the folks at home can hear you.
My name is Emily Daly, and I am with the Cincinnati YMCA. I am currently the gymnastics coordinator for the Blue Ash YMCA. And as I was preparing to just share a little bit about the project with Norwood City Council and the community of Norwood, I recalled the only other city council meeting in Norwood that I have ever been at. I was then 16 years old. I was a gymnast on the then Norwood YMCA gymnastics team, and City Council invited our team and coach to chambers here and passed a resolution, which I dug out of my file last night, dated 1987, and at which point they passed a resolution honoring our successes that year. 1987 must have been a great year and wishing us well at our national competition. I don't know what that meant to me when I was 16, but what it meant to me when I read it last night was that City Council and the community of Norwood celebrates the achievements of its community. And I really strongly believe that this YMCA gymnastics center and the project that's going to be taking place at Richard E. Linder YMCA will be something that the city of Norwood will celebrate, or maybe better words would be endorsed as well. So I had provided City Council with some packets of information. Do they have those?
Yes, we sent those out. Those are our packets.
And in the packets of information, it just spells out a little bit more detail about the budget, about really the people that this will serve. As stated in the letter, it will definitely enable the Norwood YMCA to have a larger footprint in the community of Norwood since many of its great programs that it's currently operating in the gym space are now going to be taking place in city school gymnasiums and local church gymnasiums. And Mr. Lonzel Hill is working very hard to make sure that that happens, that all of those programs can continue. But it's really exciting that the mission of the Y is going to step outside of those walls. It's definitely exciting, I guess, for gymnasts as well as we're going to have really an up-to-date facility that not only will be safer for gymnastics, especially YMCA gymnasts, but will be affordable and offer this opportunity to all people, to anyone. Gymnastics can be a very expensive sport. It won't just be about gymnastics. I mean, it'll be related to gymnastics. We will have more like street gymnastics or parkour courses. We'll have tumbling and cheerleading courses that would be good for dancers who are learning their tumbling skills, as well as it will be available for rental space for high school gymnastics teams. And Xavier University is very interested in partnering with us and having their club gymnastics team practice in that space and provide coaches and work together on that front. So that's exciting to have them along with us on this project. As well as a timeline, we are hoping to install and move much of the equipment in the early summer and hopefully have a grand opening right around the time of the Olympics, the Summer Olympics in August, or maybe around the beginning of the school year, which is an exciting time. It's when a lot of young girls get very, and young boys get very excited in the sport of gymnastics once again. So I shared the information with you, and I just hope that, as I said, this will be something that we can look forward to celebrating into the future.
Do you have any questions? I knew her as Emily Pique, so I'm old. She went, my daughter did gymnastics with Emily, and then ultimately Emily was her coach, so she's worked very hard on this project. She won't tell you that, but her husband won't tell you. And other people will tell you that, but she's worked very hard on this project. Any questions of her? Are you looking for another resolution of support, or what is it that you want of council?
Yes, the YMCA would really appreciate a resolution of support for our project.
And I'm assuming you've been in touch with the building department?
Um, no. Yeah, but we will.
Okay.
And the actual, well, the actual plan, it doesn't actually affect the space in any way. It's just install of equipment, so I don't know that, you know, certainly we can look into that.
And air conditioning.
But it's a change.
And air conditioning.
Yes.
There might be some things involved with the air conditioning. Thank you very much. Look forward to it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mumford.
I move we have a resolution drawn up to support the YMCA in this endeavor.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Hanahan. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries, so we will have a resolution prepared and on our agenda at the next meeting. Thank you. We'll move on to standing reports, or reports of standing committees of council, and the first is from financing claims. Mr. Sancker.
Yes, Madam President, thank you. Committee report from Committee of Financing Claims dated April 25th, 2016, to the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, Ohio. We, as Committee of Financing Claims, who was referred the 2016 appropriations, beg leave to submit the following report. We reviewed open POs and department shortages. We're going to transfer into civil service for testing. We're going to add $2,100 to the 0700-7200 key. And in the community center, we're going to transfer money from the 0890-7100, which is personnel key, to 0890-7200, which is a contractual key, to cover the personnel contracts for the community center. Respectfully submitted Joe Sancker, John Mumford, Tammy Stickley, and Mr. Clark.
Mr. Mumford.
I move the committee report be accepted.
Seconded by Mr. Blair. Is there any discussion? Mr. Sancker.
Just one thing, Madam President, we did request that Clark to print up some new committee reports because Andrew, he had to scratch through names to add the names to the committee members, Andrews and Tammy, so it's noted that that was requested.
I'm sure we'll take care of that. Thank you. The motion on the floor is to accept the committee report. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. We'll move on to first introductory readings of ordinances. First is an ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a lease purchase agreement without formal advertising or bidding with Professional Telecommunication Services, Inc., for the lease purchase of telephone equipment and technical services for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. I would note that Mr. Gears is here in attendance. Much pleasure. Mr. Sancker.
Madam President, I would recommend we have all three readings of the ordinance by caption only and also request Mr. Gears and the representative from the telephone company to explain the reason and purpose for the ordinance.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Mumford. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sancker.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumford.
Yes.
All members present voting aye of the motion carries. Mr. Gears.
Well, thank you. I'll give you a brief history of where we're at today on this. Approximately around April 3rd, the city lost the server, quit working, and, which really isn't too bad, because we can't get any voicemails anymore. And in some cases, if you dial a certain phone number, it says it's disconnected, so I have people calling me now and say, "Didn't you pay your phone bill?" But anyway, we, right back from vacation with that, the first day back, but anyway, so for the past three weeks, three and a half weeks, we've been working on it, getting current upgrade prices and replacement prices. The current system right now is eight years old, and it's hard to believe we purchased or we leased purchase that eight years ago, but along with that, you know, it only carries a five-year warranty. And kind of the same thing of everything else we've heard, after X amount of years, the stuff's obsolete. So we did get a price from our current provider just to replace the server, and the current price of that is in the mid $70,000 only. And we only have one server currently, and that's why we're out of service because we only have one. And along with that, we have a few of the eight-year-old phones that need to be replaced from it broken, and we decided back then not to extend the maintenance contract because it wasn't cheap per year. So it's easier to buy a phone, so we've been kind of switching phones around the past three years. What we did then is through past jobs, PTS is a professional telecommunications service. This is Cole Heiserfield, our representative. We contacted them within the city, and they have done some stuff for us in the past, and they've done an outstanding job. Once we contacted them, I can say this, Cole jumped right in at 100%, and he looked right into everything we got. We had collection of all our bills, and basically they compared apples and apples and oranges and oranges, or what we're paying for, and kind of what we're getting, and what we do need, what we don't need. And so they worked very hard on getting proposal together for the city. Say, when it's all said and done, we will get the same service we've got right now. And just as a side note, we do have a couple contracts with our current provider that do not, don't expire until April 2017.
Yes, yeah.
So we're tied into that part, but the part that we can interchange, or we can move from our current provider to them, we'll end up having, the city, I should say, will get all brand-new equipment, all new phones. We will have now two servers. We'll have a backup, which we don't have now. And along with that, we will have, in every city building, there will be Wi-Fi. And I know it's hard to believe this, but it's, this is all going to be done at the current price we're paying for the services, with some modifications in that, but we aren't losing anything with no additional cost, and we will save additional money once we're able to switch over in April 17 to PTS.
Full-time worker. So I'll give you guys a little bit of background. When they first, when they first called about it, we came, we were like, "Oh, it's emergency. I decided I'd come out tonight." TA was like, "Well, I'm not even going to be there. Nobody's going to be there. Come out tomorrow." So we spent the day out here, and we needed, one of the primary reasons we look at people's phone, customers' phone bills is to do like, we have to see where the trunking at, is how it's set up, how it's configured, and the only way to get that really, the most accurate information is to go through the phone bills themselves. So I got all the phone bills, the matching POs for them, all from CBT, all the accounts you guys have with them. After going through them and kind of, was trying to save you guys some money to make this a little bit less of a burden on you, as, by just doing a telecom audit, just to see where you guys could kind of find the wiggle room. Long story short, like you said, I was able to kind of combine different services, adjust some things with Cincinnati Bell, stuff that was not contracted, things that had been added on, stuff like that. We were able to get you a brand-new phone system from NEC with a failover, so it's going to be failover redundant. So you're going to have a server here and a server in your fire department, so if anything ever happened here, like it has, everything is going to be failed over to the fire department. So you're not going to look, it's not going to crash like this. You're not going to, you're going to be out of phones for weeks and weeks. We were able to get you all-new data equipment, so no data switches, stuff like that, and obviously citywide Wi-Fi in all your buildings, along with support for the next five years and hardware warranties, that kind of thing. And I did, I gave to Joe, I think he submitted it to legal or the finance. We did a financial breakdown, matching up the POs to where we got the pricing. Does anybody have questions?
Questions? Mr. Sancker.
The one question I had, but you somewhat answered it already, you know, as far as the preventative scope of looking so that this doesn't happen again, and you mentioned that with the backup server.
Yes.
That would, you know, help to protect us in that area, but is this something that is, happened because of a power surge, or is it something that could be prevented with surge protection, or was it just a fluke that it was an old server and couldn't take what was coming through?
It was just a fluke. I mean, your system was just, your server was just old. So the big windstorm we had, it just, all it did is made the server blink. I mean, blinked on, off, and it tried to blink back on, and it just couldn't come back on, and that was it. And that killed it. So it was just, it was an older server, wear and tear, and the windstorm to shut it down, and there was nowhere for it to fail over to. So that's, that's what happened. But with, hiding in both locations, you're going to have, you're going to have that failover, you're going to have the redundancy, so this one, this one blinks and goes out, you got one over here. And PTS does also in our contract. We do include a crash kit onsite at our store, our shop, so if, let's say both of them went down, which I wouldn't see happening, we do actually have your standard system. We default program it, we can get it out here and get you up and running while we're getting the warranty handled with NEC, so that's another bonus.
Mrs. Stickley?
And you said the warranty was for five years? Is that correct?
Yes, you've got a five-year, like, so all phone systems, phone systems are software-based now, so you get five years of software licensing and updates, which we'll take care of for you guys, and you get five years of hardware, full hardware coverage. Now, at the end of the five years, we, as a company PTS, because we have such a broad range of customers that keep their systems for 15, 20 years, we actually will reconstruct the, our support contract and actually take on the responsibility, so we'll extend your hardware warranty and go from there. So you've got an extension, and it's not going to be like, oh, $50,000 or re-extend it. It's going to be something like, okay, you're paying, say, $1,200 in support now, let's say we'll call it $1,450, and we'll extend your hardware warranty, stuff like that, so you're not totally getting a big slap in the face after five years. That answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions?
And I would just say, after that time, the equipment will be paid for.
Oh, yeah.
So that will be at a lower cost. That's not in addition to the payment we would be making, so it is going to go down.
Yeah, after five years, all the equipment, everything is yours. It's owned outright.
And don't the, if I remember right, the servers have additional memory in them?
Additional memory?
I'm an electronics person.
They do store, I mean.
Store more.
Yeah, they store 550 hours of voicemails each, so, yeah, if you guys ever have 550 hours of voicemails, I want to check into that. But yeah, they have, they have, NEC is the number one small to medium-sized phone system in the world, and they, they're major with municipalities, so they gave, we gave you guys, I mean, a killer price.
Mrs. Hanahan, did you have a question?
No.
Mr. Stiff isn't here, but I'm sure he would want us to ask, is there any outlay upfront?
Zero.
I'm sure he's breathing easier. Great. Any other questions? Mr. Bonzal.
Yeah, I just wanted to, again, thank you all for the work that you all have been doing on this, so this definitely sounds great for the city. I think, I know Wi-Fi, the senior center, they're going to be really happy about that, so. But again, I know that you all have done a lot of work with this, and I'm really excited that we're going to have these system upgrades at the same, pretty much the same price that we're paying now, so thanks for that.
I mean, in reality, we don't even have Wi-Fi at City Hall.
No.
So.
Might actually be able to get emails and texts and stuff now.
Yeah, that's the goal.
Great.
Does that mean we're going to have people hanging out on the steps of City Hall trying to get on our system?
We talked about that.
Yeah, so we can, we'll set it up so you'll have a guest network and a private network, and guests, we'll limit the range for guests, so you've got to be inside the city building. Yeah, and then we can just set it up for your private network is where you'll have the password. But we, we're a networking company too, so we're a networking consultant company, so we can do, we do all, pretty much everything in the compass is that.
And looking down the road, we talked about, we'll be, we'll be able to put basically live TV cameras.
Oh, they, yeah.
If we decide to, videos inside all the parks, and just like you go to any cam in a resort or whatever, residents can sit at home and see what's going on in the parks or any area we so desire to do, so. It has all that capacity, so.
Yeah, we have the ability to do that.
Yeah.
Do I have to go out to Naukau games anymore right now?
Which camera was that on? Hold on a second.
Any other questions? Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
The motion on the floor is to suspend the rules. Call the roll, please.
I did.
Oh, that's right, you did. Okay. Yes, we had the, we had the discussion that came up, so what is your pleasure?
Yep.
Mr. Bonzal. Yeah, we haven't read it yet. Read it.
Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a lease purchase agreement without formal advertising or bidding with Professional Telecommunication Services, Inc., for the lease purchase of telephone equipment and technical services for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a lease purchase agreement without formal advertising or bidding with Professional Telecommunication Services, Inc., for the lease purchase of telephone equipment and technical services for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a lease purchase agreement without formal advertising or bidding with Professional Telecommunication Services, Inc., for the lease purchase of telephone equipment and technical services for the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency.
So excited about law fight. Mr. Mumford.
I move we pass the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Bonzal. Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzal.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Next, we have an ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to effect a government electricity program with opt-out provisions pursuant to Section forty-nine, twenty-eight point two-zero of the Ohio Revised Code directing the Hamilton County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors. Um, for your information, I did contact the Board of Elections, um, officially, and was informed that anything that needs to be on the November ballot must be received in their office finalized, complete, ready to go, no later than four PM on August the tenth, so, we did verify that, it's true on Facebook.
Yes.
So what's your pleasure with this ordinance? Mr. Bonzo.
Um, I move that we have the first reading of the ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mumper is standing up.
I think our law director is somebody that come in.
I just wanted everyone to know, I did get a copy of, uh, the agreement that they would, that the, the company would want with us in order to provide the services, and I've read through it, I, and I will forward it to everyone in time for the next meeting, so you have some idea of what we can expect if we go with them later on.
And he, um, the gentleman did forward to me late this afternoon some information about City Hall and our public buildings and our streets, but I couldn't download the PDFs, so I will try it again, and I, once I get those, or I'll send it out to all of you, so you can see it, um, about how much we would save even if we just did our city buildings and the streetlights, so, Mr. Mumper.
I, I do think that the mayor tried to give that check that they left here, uh, to Jim Stiff to deposit, couldn't get it in the bank, the bank didn't have the processing equipment that would handle it.
Imagine that. That would've been nice, though. Is there any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to have the first reading, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries, please have the first read.
An ordinance authorizing all actions necessary to effect a governmental electricity program with opt-out provisions pursuant to Section four-nine-two-eight point two-zero of the Ohio Revised Code directing the Hamilton County Board of Elections to submit a ballot question to the electors.
Move on to ordinance number three, an ordinance repealing Norwood Codified Ordinances, Chapter seven-six-one, regulating tattoo establishments. Mr. Clark.
I could just ask a question to the law director, if he knows where this came from and what the purpose behind this is.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam President, um, I was hoping that we'd spelled it all out in the whereas clauses, but, um, uh, the sanitary went, there's a place opening in Rookwood, permanent makeup place, and so they needed to get inspected as a tattoo parlor, and she said, why do you guys even have a code? We just use the state anyway, and, and looking into, the state fully regulates it, and actually state code says the city shall inspect and certify under these standards, so we don't need to have one, the same reason we don't have a code that reg- that regulates, um, restaurant operation, it's just all handled under the state, under, under the state code.
Perfect, thanks. Initially, when the ordinance was passed, there was no state regulation, and since that has been adopted, so, I know personally, I was like, no department, yes, Mr. Mumper.
Can they do the Norwood seal as a tattoo?
Sure.
I think if you need it, we all, you know.
You go first.
Our forehead, so people could aim at it.
She said, Mr. Moore, this is a, a permanent ma- like a-
It's a permanent makeup.
Permanent makeup. But it, it wa- it is a tattoo parlor, like they do eyebrows and stuff. All right, what's your pleasure? We have no motions yet. Mr. Bonzo.
I move that we have the first reading of the ordinance, and second, and third.
Suspend the rule?
And suspend the rule, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Clark, seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries, please have all three readings.
Ordinance repealing Norwood Codified Ordinances, Chapter seven-six-one, regulating tattoo establishments. Ordinance repealing Norwood Codified Ordinances, Chapter seven-six-one, regulating tattoo establishments. Ordinance repealing Norwood Codified Ordinances, Chapter seven-six-one, regulating tattoo establishments.
Mr. Mumper.
I move the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mr. Clark, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Move on to the ordinance that was added, an ordinance to change appropriations for the year two thousand and sixteen and declaring an emergency. Mr. Sankar.
Uh, yes, Madam President, I would recommend that we have, uh, all three readings of, uh, the ordinance, this is based on what came through from the Finance Committee meeting last evening.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries, please have all three readings.
Ordinance to change appropriations for the year two thousand and sixteen and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year two thousand and sixteen and declaring an emergency. Ordinance to change appropriations for the year two thousand and sixteen and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mumper.
I move the ordinance be passed.
Seconded by Mrs. Stickley, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. Move on to introductory readings of resolutions. The first is a resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation and to notify the Board of Elections of Hamilton County to cause the notice of election to be given as required by law on the question of levying an eight mil renewal property tax for the current operating expenses of the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Mr. Clark.
I move to suspend the rules and have all three readings of this ordinance.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper, is there any discussion? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President, the important word in there, um, is the renewal, this is strictly a renewal of the existing, um, levy that is in, uh, on the books here, you know, presently, uh, which helps with our operating expenses, um, and so it, it is strictly a renewal, and, um, the earliest, uh, we could get on the ballot is, uh, this November, but, uh, we really don't need, well, I'm not saying really don't need, we would rather have it pass right here in November, but in the, in the event it wouldn't pass, it affords us an opportunity, um, to come back to, to the people next year for, this will not run out, um, until actually next year, this will, um, will just go in the place when the other one runs out, so it's, it's not gonna be added immediately, even when it passes in November, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sankar, any other discussion? The motion on the floor is to suspend the rules, call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries, please have all three readings.
Resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation and to notify the Board of Elections of Hamilton County to cause the notice of election to be given as required by law on the question of levying an eight mil renewal property tax for the current operating expenses of the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation and to notify the Board of Elections of Hamilton County to cause the notice of election to be given as required by law on the question of levying an eight mil renewal property tax for the current operating expenses of the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency. Resolution declaring it necessary to levy a tax in excess of the ten mil limitation and to notify the Board of Elections of Hamilton County to cause the notice of election to be given as required by law on the question of levying an eight mil renewal property tax for the current operating expenses of the city of Norwood and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Clark.
I move to pass the resolution.
Seconded by Mr. Mumper, is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Bonzo.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mrs. Stickley.
Yes.
Mr. Blair.
Yes.
Mrs. Hanahan.
Yes.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mumper.
Yes.
All members present voting aye, the motion carries. We have no administration reports, we do have one request to address counsel, and that is Pastor Sonny James.
Good evening, counsel and residents of Norwood, I, um, wanna first say, uh, congratulations to our newest council member on her successful delivery of a healthy baby, so we wanna show that we have great concern for all of our partners and residents. Next, I want to, um, again, put it on council's heart and mind, as most of you know, I have presented a thirteen-point plan to the city that addresses in great detail a lot of the issues that our community still faces to this day. Those of you who have not reached out to me, I strongly encourage you to do so immediately. We are less than thirty days of our students ending the school year and now coming out for the summer. I will say again and again and again, we have to come together, not with folks that love the community, but maybe have never experienced what we need to address. Again, we have folks right here in the community that have the experience, that can help us address the needs of our community. One of the things that I definitely wanna challenge us as a city to start doing, I understand that we declare an emergency, at the same time, when we say no professional advertising or bidding, one of the things that I wanna encourage us to do is to always be inclusive, always create a process where every citizen of Norwood has equal opportunity to address or take a shot at every opportunity that every man, woman, boy, and child can do. I'd like to make sure that as we-
Twenty-ninth, um, me and my passenger, um, were involved in a road rage incident, which someone who has since been identified as Captain George Schneider of the Norwood Fire Department, um, that at that time, he was not arrested, and, um, up until-
Excuse me.
A couple of weeks ago, we were told that he would not be charged, given that we have a nine-one-one call, two witness statements, and we, um, identified Captain George Schneider.
Ma'am, I'm gonna ask you to, I'm gonna ask you to stop, I thought that your comments were, and, and follow-up to Reverend James.
This firefighter has since been arrested for an OBI.
Ma'am, I'm gonna ask that you stop, I'm gonna ask that you stop, because council has absolutely no authority over this, I am sympathetic to-
I brought the issue up to Mayor Thomas, uh, uh, a few weeks ago, he told me he may or may not look into it, this is obviously an issue in the Norwood community, this man has since-
I'm gonna ask that you stop now.
Been arrested for OBI.
I'm gonna ask that you stop now.
And he's still out on the streets.
I'm gonna ask that you stop now, thank you.
Thank you for your time, I just wanted to be sure it wasn't a race issue in the city of Norwood.
Thank you.
Because that's what it sounds like.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, we, uh, I afforded you an opportunity that I normally don't do, because I thought you were following up-
And that's all right, I appreciate it.
With Pastor James, and so, um, that was my mis- uh, that was my, my mistake.
Your mistake, okay, no, maybe it was the city of Norwood.
It was my mistake, so, thank you very much.
They let him back out on the street to do it again.
We will move on to unfinished business. We will move on to unfinished business.
The whole day of the committee.
Is there any unfinished business?
None.
Under new business, I received a request from Mr. Stiff, um, that we have a tax budget that we need to, um, have a public hearing for, and he has asked that that be the first council meeting in June, so I would like to announce that there will be a public hearing on the tax budget on June the fourteenth, uh, during our regular council meeting. Mr. Bonzo.
Yeah, so I've got some good news here, uh, so, yeah, um, so Woven Oak, uh, which is, uh, a group that does a lot with, uh, they have different things that they do with, like garden camp with kids, and do, they do a couple of other things in West Norwood, but they're gonna have a parade this Friday, it's called the High Five Parade, it's a, the purpose is to spread joy and cheer like a big high five, and so they're gonna have a, a one-point-three mile route, that's gonna start at the community center, excuse me, wrap around, uh, kinda wrap around West Norwood, and then end at Victory Park, where they're gonna have a, a cookout, and so all kids and adults are invited to participate, it's this Friday at four o'clock, uh, so, and the cookout should start around five, uh, they've got, have great support from like the Norwood Drug and Alcohol Coalition, the Norwood Police Department, specifically Ron Murphy, which really is no surprise, because he's just involved in everything, and he's just a great asset to the city of Norwood, and so I'd just like to invite the citizens to participate, there's more information about it on Next Door Norwood, and, uh, but you can also just show up, so, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzo. Mr. Mumper.
Yeah, I just wanna make a comment on, um, one of our parks, playgrounds that's used for the not-hole, Waterworks Four, uh, close to Forest Avenue, uh, sits down in the hole, and there's like, a deck where people consist, stuff like that, well, that park was around for baseball when I was a kid, and it was always the worst field in Norwood. And I've been there several times this year with two grandsons playing on the same team, and it is the nicest-looking field ever, right now. They've spent some time on it, they, they did some leveling out and got grass growing everywhere, and it's, and people are commenting, what a nice park, and I never, ever thought that would be said about that, that location, but it is fantastic, and I wanna congratulate the Public Works for all they, all they've done there.
Perhaps we should send a note, thank you, ma'am, excellent, thank you, Mr. Clark.
Um, just wanna remind everyone about the Hope Over Heron Launch Meeting coming up, um, a week from today, on Tuesday, May third, at six-thirty, we at Cameron Avenue Church of God, uh, we do have our location, I'm happy to announce it'll be at the old Nora Plaza, um, parking lot, so, um, we have a signed contract with them, and we're all excited about that, and the community, um, involvement has been overwhelming, we've received donations for food, money, it's just been awesome, so please come out and find out more about that, and then, um, we'll be hosting prayer meeting on Saturday, May seventh, at one PM at City Hall, thank you.
Mr. Sankar.
Yes, question for Andrew, what time, what time did you say?
Oh, uh, six, six-thirty.
And that's next Tuesday?
Yeah, Cam- yeah, Cameron Avenue Church of God, it's May third.
May the third.
Yeah.
Any other new business? Mr. Sankar.
Yes, Madam President, I, I didn't know, uh, do we need to take a vote to set that, um, public hearing? Okay.
I don't think so, it's under new business, and I, I don't think so. Um, I also went to, uh, I don't know if it should've been under old business or new business, but there are three people in this room who are a little hoarse this meeting for a good reason, this weekend was the, uh, variety show, and, uh, Mr. Mumper was the driver, driving out to California, and, uh, had quite a few little punchlines, and Mr. Sankar, as always, jumped up, I was like, he hasn't jumped off the stage yet, and he did at the end, jumped off the stage, and Mr. Gears is here, um, he was in the show as well, and, uh, with his son, it was just delightful to see people, um, in City Hall and who are politicians or whatever, take part in community events, so, I applaud your participation, and you are, were you a businessman, you did the curtains or whatever?
I wrote it.
You wrote it, okay, even better.
So it's good to see politicians act like fools.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think it comes natural, right, so, um, but it's, it was very well very well attended when we went, it was a lot of fun, and I just want to acknowledge all the work that goes into that, and that people had a good time, so, thank you for your participation in that, appreciate it. Any other new business, Mr. Sanker?
Yes, Madam President, um, earlier this evening, we did, uh, approve on appropriation the contractual, uh, agreements for the, uh, community center, and just so people may not be aware, but, um, Sharon Hobbs and Jerry Osterman are back at the community center on a part-time basis, um, so, um, they're part-time, but they're under a contractual deal, so whenever they decide to hang it up, hang it up again, there we go, but they are there, uh, just on a part-time basis, um, to help out at the community center until, uh, the permanent, uh, person is found to take that place, so, but just, so everybody's aware, they're, they're back part-time down at the community center, so, thanks.
Thank you.
Is there any other new business?
Okay, now, we'll move on to communications, uh, we deal, we dealt with the first one, the second is for a letter from Dusty Rhodes Auditor regarding certificate of estimated property tax revenue.
To Norwood City Council, the county auditor of Hamilton County, Ohio, does hereby certify the following: On March fifteenth, twenty sixteen, the taxing authority of the council of the city of Norwood certified a copy of its resolution number five dash twenty sixteen, adopted February twenty-third, twenty sixteen, requesting the county auditor to certify the current tax valuation of the city of Norwood and the amount of revenue that would be produced by eight mils. The levy is a tax outside the ten mil limitation for the purpose of current operating expenses of the city of Norwood at a rate not exceeding eight mils pursuant to section five-seven-zero-five point one-nine-A of the Ohio Revised Code, and will be placed on the ballot at the November eighth, twenty sixteen, election. The levy type is a renewal of an existing eight mils. The estimated property tax revenue that will be produced by the stated millage, assuming the tax valuation of the city of Norwood remains constant throughout the life of the levy, is calculated to be one million, four hundred and fifty-six thousand, six hundred and nine dollars per year. The total estimated tax valuation of the city of Norwood used in calculating the estimated property tax revenue is three hundred and sixty-seven million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. Signed, Dusty Rhodes, Auditor, Hamilton County, Ohio.
Mr. Muffer?
Uh, I'd like to have the letter received and filed.
Seconded by Mr. Blair, is there any discussion? Mr. Sanker?
Uh, yes, just, as a explanation as well, that this, um, was, uh, to do with the resolution we passed earlier about, uh, putting the, uh, the renewal back on, on the ballot, this, a couple of months ago, or a month or so, when we passed the resolution requesting this information to come from the auditors, the county auditor, uh, that was the first step in the process of getting it on the ballot, and so, this is step two, but this pertains to the resolution that we had on the ballot this evening, in case there's a question.
Mr. Muffer?